I would like to call this village board meeting of Thursday, April 17, 2025, to order. Will the clerk please take the role?
Mayor Coker.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Here.
Trustee Light.
Here.
Trustee Meritato.
Here.
Trustee Pojek.
Here.
Trustee Schroder.
Here.
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A public hearing by the mayor and board of trustees for the purpose of receiving oral and written comments from the public concerning the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2025, and ending April 30th, 2026. This public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a comment regarding the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2025, and ending April 30th, 2026? Anyone from public? None? Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Trustee Schmidt.
I move that the public hearing be closed.
Trustee, like the second.
Second.
Any discussion? Role call, please.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
This public hearing is closed. Number two, we now move on to petitions and communications. Trustee Schmidt, please.
The next coffee and chat with the village president and board will be Saturday, May 3rd, at the Lynda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or village board, please call the village president's office anytime at (630) 909-5302, or contact your district trustee. Register now for the village's e-newsletter. On the first Monday of each month, we will email you information regarding the month ahead, with news from the village of Glendale Heights, various programs, events, and other important information. To register, please visit the village website at www.glandaleheights.org. If you have any questions, please contact the village's Public Relations Division at[225.48][225.51](630) 909-5350. Thank you.
I want to announce, next board meeting will be new mayor Rebecca Janelli, so it will be not Chogri Coker. Okay, second is Trustee Siddiqui.
Arbor Day is nationally celebrated observance that encourages tree planting and care, founded by J. Sterling Morton in 1872. It is celebrated each year on the last Friday in April to coincide with the best tree planting times. This year, Illinois observes Arbor Day on Friday, April 25th. The village will be working with various community groups to plant new trees throughout the community in honor of Arbor Day. If you have any questions regarding tree planting and care, please call (630) 260-6060. Stop by the Sports Hub on the first and third Thursdays of each month for Glendale Heights seasonal market, shop for food, produce, crafts, and more from locally sourced vendors. The market runs from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. If you would like to be a vendor or for more information, please contact Tanya Mako at (630) 909-5459.
Next is Trustee Light, please.
Thank you. During the months of April and May, parking restrictions will be in effect from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. due to street sweeping. Color-coded no parking signs are posted in four different zones throughout the village. Street parking is not allowed on Mondays for the red zone, Tuesdays for the blue zone, Wednesdays for the green zone, and Fridays for the brown zone. To find your zone, please visit the village's website. For any questions on street sweeping program, please contact Public Works at (630) 260-6040. Do you have any unwanted or old cell phones, retired U.S. flags, bikes, batteries, and other recyclables? Drop them off at the One Stop Reuse and Recycling Depot on Saturday, April 26th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. All items can be dropped off at the GH2O Aquatic Center Parking Lot, located at 240 Civic Center Plaza. Document shredding will be available at the event, with a limit of four boxes per vehicle. For more information or a complete list of accepted items, visit glendaleheights.org or call (630) 260-6000. Thank you.
Welcome. Clerk Clark Smith, please.
The village of Glendale Heights is now hiring for a number of seasonal positions at Glendale Lakes Golf Club, GH2O Aquatic Center, Public Works, and the Leisure Services Department. Positions range from laborers, lifeguards, youth program counselors, and many more. Gain valuable experience and make friends that will last a lifetime, working for the village of Glendale Heights. For more information, please visit www.glandaleheights.org/hr, or contact Human Resources at (630) 909-5357.
Trustee Meritato.
On Monday, May 26th, Memorial Day, at 11:00 a.m. at Veterans Memorial Park, we will honor the memory of the brave men and women who died while serving our country. The Glendale Heights VFW Post 2377 will conduct the Fallen Warrior Ceremony, followed by Reed Lane Ceremony. This includes a flag and a color guard presentation, rifle salute, and patriotic acknowledgement. If you would like to help by volunteering to help plant American flags on Thursday, May 22nd, from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. at Veterans Memorial Park, please visit the village's website at www.glandaleheights.org. Each flag represents a fallen soldier from Operation Iraqi Freedom and Operation Enduring Freedom in Afghanistan. For more information, please call Jessica at (630) 260-6060. And please note, in Observancy Memorial Day, those offices will be closed on Monday, May 26th.
Trustee Pojek.
Summer is just around the corner, and the GH2O Aquatic Center will be opening Memorial Day weekend on May 24th. Purchase your pool passes starting May 1st through the end of May for discounted rates. Benefits to become a member include priority entrance at 11:30 a.m. and discounts on swim lessons, swim team registration, pool rentals, and more. For more information, contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060.
Trustee Schroder.
Senior citizens age 65 or better are encouraged to apply for the Senior Citizen Utility Tax Rebate Program. Qualifying applicants will receive a $75 rebate check as part of this program if they meet the following guidelines. One, age 65 or better, honor before December the 31st, 2024, or if you have a spouse who is age 65. Two, if you've lived in Glendale Heights for all of 2024 as either an owner or a renter. Three, have earned no more than $45,000 of gross income during 2024. And four, have a utility bill and paid for in their name. Applications are now being accepted through April the 30th. If you have any questions, please contact the Lynda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens at (630) 260-604-6060, or the Finance Department at (630) 260-6000. Thank you.
Welcome. A proclamation to proclaim the week of April 20th to 26th, 2025, as National Volunteer Week. Next, a proclamation to proclaim April 22, 2025, as Earth Day. Next, a proclamation to proclaim April 25, 2025, as Arbor Day. If there are no objections, I will sign these proclamations. Number five, Urban Forestry Management Plan Update and Arbor Day Tree City. Mr. Keith.
All right.
You're already there.
My turn. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to come before you to do our inaugural update on the village's Urban Forestry Management Plan and the tree work that has been done in the village this past year. As a quick refresher, you passed an ordinance last year creating a tree board that would review and make recommendations on the UFMP and report those annually. Today, we are here to do just that. First, a quick introduction of the tree board, which is made up of village arborist Chuck Dombrowski, over here, division manager of Parks and Facilities Vince Gesada, and myself. Also here this evening is Parks Forum and Matt Frue, who along with his staff is actually the one responsible for the work that is done on these trees. As already mentioned, we received a grant a few years back, and with that grant and some additional funding by the village, we were able to do three very important things dealing with trees. One, we created, we did a village-wide tree inventory for parkways, parks, and other village-owned property. We updated our Urban Forestry Management Plan, and we created and passed our new tree ordinance.
The UFMP is a planning document that identifies divisions, goals, and guiding principles for managing our municipality's urban forest. This document serves as a roadmap for staff tree work throughout the village. The UFMP also offers valuable insights into the condition of the city's urban forest and provides guidance and technical advice for implementation. So, what does urban forestry mean? Why don't we just do that one, since we'll be talking about that a lot? As you hear us speak, the phrase is urban forest, urban tree canopy tonight. That refers to all trees growing within an urban area, including our parks and our greenways along streets and on other private and public properties. Okay. That slide. So, some of these species that you see up here on this slide are the change in species composition for 2024 through 2044. That's part of the UFMP guidelines. The trees to the left that we're trying to reduce, we just have overage. So according to UFMP guidelines, they carry higher percentages, and we want to reduce that to add to these species that you see on the right. Okay. Take that one.
All right. So, our urban forestry update. So here is the findings of the Urban Forestry Board and our update of what has been accomplished over this year. First of all, we currently have approximately 7,412 trees across the village's property with approximately 112 different species. We planted 101 new trees to date. We've trimmed nearly 500 trees, and we will be adding approximately 340 additional trees in this upcoming year, as the board will hopefully pass this evening $116,000 in funding that is budgeted for trees to be added both in the spring and fall of this year and the spring of next year. The final item the tree board would like to report is that we are recommending no changes to the village's Urban Forestry Management Plan this year. That takes us to the Tree City and Chuck.
Thank you, Mr. Keith. Good evening. The village of Glendale Heights is the proud recipient of the Tree City USA Award for the 28th consecutive year. This award is granted to communities who meet certain urban forest maintenance criteria per capita in their jurisdiction. This program is designated to create consistent measurable standards for urban forestry while also celebrating the hard work done to support trees around the world. I'm happy to say the village is proud to announce that it also received the Tree City Growth Award. This prestigious recognition is presented to communities that demonstrate a higher level of commitment to effective urban forest management. The completion of the Urban Forestry Management Plan, like Mr. Vince was talking about, and our newly implemented Hug a Tree program, played a significant role in achieving this award by enhancing community engagement and promoting sustainable forestry practices. So we got that award largely through the Hug a Tree. The Hug a Tree, the 2025 Glendale Heights Hug a Tree campaign launches on Arbor Day, which is next Friday, and will run through September. You find the hugable trees throughout the ton of different parks and new species we have in 2025. Scan the QR codes at each tree to access fun facts and the online scavenger hunt. Give each tree a hug and share your photos using hashtag #HugATreeGH. You can find additional information at www.glandaleheights.org/eco/hugatree ASP. All right, not a good stuff. Everybody knows I like getting roots in the ground. So, our Arbor Day celebrations in Glendale Heights. On April 22nd, which is Earth Day, the Kiwanis Club will be planting a tree at Circle Park along with students from District 15. April 23rd, the village, the Parks Division, along with Village of Glendale Heights Path Program and preschool, will be celebrating by planting two trees on the village campus. On April 24th, the Kiwanis Club and Builders Club will be planting a tree at Americana Park. At all these events, village staff will share the benefits of trees and their role in the environment with the students. Then next is some pictures of us having fun at last year's tree plantings. This one, where was this one? This was at, up at Veterans Park, and then planting at Nozzles Park, and then planting trees at Americana Park. It's a good time. You kicking me out already?
Kicking me out.
Sorry.
We have a really good system. It's that annual time for Keith Arbor Day Fun Facts. I believe Trustee Pojek has told me this is his favorite thing every year. So here we go. All right. Did you know the world's very first Arbor Day wasn't even in the U.S.? It happened way back in 1594 in Montenegro, Spain. America joined the tree party in the early 1870s, won on April 10th, 1872. Julius Sterling Morton was able to get the first Arbor Day celebration in Nebraska. I always give you those. Today's new one is Arbor Day was almost called Sylvan Day. Silva is Latin for of the forest or woodland, and Mr. Morton decided against naming it Sylvan Day, which was his original choice, because he wanted the day to include all types of trees, not just forest trees. All right, so.
Wrap this one up. Huge thank you to the Parks Department, Matt and your staff, Glendale Heights Kiwanis Club, Glendale Heights Builders Club, District 15 and 16, the Glendale Heights Green Team, Sports Hub Path and Preschool Programs, for making difference in our community throughout this commitment, and thanks to you guys as well, too.
So I always put the question one on here, and if nobody has any questions, one of the things we want to do before we end this is we have our tree flag here, and we'd like to take some pictures with the board to commemorate the fact that we received that again. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Keith and his team, for keeping our village green, healthy, providing oxygen for human beings and other animals.
Thank you.
Really appreciate your service, Lynn.
Thank you.
All right. Picture time.
Again, anybody from public for any comments on agenda items only? Yes, Wuher, please.
I got two questions from the tree thing. One, when you're doing the, Kim and I were talking, when you're doing the schools and districts, we never remember to include part of District 41, which is over in District 2, so it's something to think about. I have a question about the parkway trees. Where's Chuckie? So, on the parkway trees, are residents allowed to trim them, or does your program cover that?
Oh, no. We trim the trees. Yeah. I mean, if a resident walks out and trims a tree, how are we going to know unless? But we will take care of it. All they have to do is call the sports hub, and if they feel their tree needs trimming, and either myself or Vince or Matt would go out and look at the tree, and if it needs trimming, we trim it.
Okay. So not just when that big program goes through, like, you know, every year, every year, whatever? They could do it just annually?
Yes. We do it, we do have an annual tree trimming, but it's in a rotation of five years. So, you know, trees need trimming, sometimes more than that. And if you ever need your parkway tree or residence, whatever, just call the sports hub, they'll put it in here. We do, through the year rotation, maybe once a month or a week, but then in the winter, we'll hit it by zones, and we usually go by streets we can zone that, so every year we dedicate to do that. We also have contracted service that do the taller stuff, so village is about 15 down, and then the contracted services are up.
I was just, you know, the tree by my house was just, you know, it had all those, like, things shooting out of the, so I trimmed them off, and my one neighbor came out and, like, kind of yelled at me, saying, "You can't do that." I'm like, "Why?"
You know, we were hoping the residents do take some consideration in the parkway trees, especially where we're getting ready to plant those. We always need their help watering and calling in if there is an issue, but anything you see, just give them a call to the sports hub, and we will take care of it.
Okay, but the simple stuff, it is okay if a resident, if we trim something in our own parkway?
I'm sure you got a set of tools and everything.
I do. All right, thank you.
Is that their tree, like, on the blue ward or any tree?
Well, the village is monitoring all the open spaces and parks. Obviously, if a resident sees something, we would certainly want them to call in, so we can.
Okay, because a lot of residents has trees on their properties as well.
Yeah, private property, we certainly can't turn into a personal landscape, you know? We certainly can go out to the resident, give them advice, and maybe some, you know, some direction on what they need to do. We certainly can't trim on private property.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Let me summarize this, you know, any tree that is public property, I mean, if you're walking, you feel, you know, a branch is down, you know, it's, you know, obstruction, you know, someone, you can do it, you know? And if it's a private tree, it's coming on your property, still you can do it, or you can hire, on your own level, personal level, you can take care of that, and you can also call village, and they will take care of you. Next, anybody else from outlook? Any comments? None? Okay. You have the consent agenda before you vote. Acting village administrator, please read the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. One, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of April 3rd, 2025. Two, approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of April 3rd, 2025. Three, approval of special board meeting, of the village board meeting minutes of April 14th, 2025. Four, approval of accounts payable listing of April 17th, 2025, the amount of $3,984,961 and 14 cents. Five, resolution to authorize the issuance of notice of award and authorize the execution of a contract for the purchase and planting of parkway trees for spring and fall 2025, spring 2026 in the village of Glendale Heights. Six, approval of pay request number seven, final to FH Passion, SN Nielsen Associates, LLC, for the Camber Park turf field project, total amount not to exceed $325,166 with 41 cents. Seven, approval of consent.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Trustee Schmidt.
I move that the village board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Trustee Bat, Meritato.
Second.
Role call vote.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. Next, old business, there's none, new business. Number one, a motion to waive first reading on new business items 2 through 5. Is there a motion to waive first reading on new items 2 to 5? Trustee Light.
I make a motion to waive first reading on new business items number 2 through 5.
Trustee Schroder.
Second.
Discussion. None. Role call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
A motion to waive first reading on new business items 2 through 5 is approved. An ordinance to approve and authorize the annual appropriation ordinance of the village of Glendale Heights, LNI, first reading is waived. This is ordinance 2025-16. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-16? Trustee Light.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Siddiqui, second. Role call vote, please.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
A motion to adopt ordinance 2025-16 is approved. Number three, an ordinance to waive bid accept the proposal of Ron Lemon DBA Quality Concerts and authorize the execution of a production equipment slash producer entertainment agreement for the summer concert in the ORC series, first reading is waived. This is ordinance 2025-17. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-17? Trustee Meritato.
So moved.
Trustee Schroder.
Second.
Role discussion. None. Role call vote, please.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
A motion to adopt ordinance 2025-17 is approved. Number four, an ordinance to waive bid accept the proposal of Ron Lemon DBA Quality Concerts and authorize the execution of a producer entertainment agreement for 2025. Glendale Heights Fest, first reading is waived. This is ordinance 2025-18. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-18? Trustee Schmidt.
So moved.
Trustee Light.
Second.
Our discussion. Role call vote, please.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
A motion to adopt ordinance 2025-18 is approved. Number five, an ordinance to approve and authorize the execution of a master license agreement with Lumis Fiber of LNI LLC. for the installation, attachment, operation, and maintenance of telecommunications facilities, within public rights of way, first reading is way, this is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nineteen. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nineteen? Uh, Trustee Maritato?
So moved.
Trustee Schmidt?
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I have a question. Doug, do you know when this will be finishing up, or what's the timeline for this?
Uh, Lumos Fiber is here, if you.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Good, oh, okay. Great.
So, hoping it started, um, it's our filing permits as soon as we have light into the area. Um, basically, we're gonna be starting in the area hopefully by the end of, of this year.
So you will be digging in and putting the fiber up there?
Correct, yeah, our goal is to overbuild the entire community, provide a new option for internet service for the residents, I'm in small, medium-sized businesses.
Yeah, I can't wait to open your service, I'm tired of Comcast, that's the only option we have right now. So, it will be, like, what's the timeframe, like, completing this?
Our full build is about a four-year project for DuPage County.
Okay, so.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, I mean, the, when this will be functional, like, when the consumer can be signing up for your internet?
Uh, thirty days after we go down the actual street or block, um, the customer will be able to sign up for services.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes.
Question, do we have a plan that shows where the fiber is going in, so that we know in what neighborhoods?
Yes.
I'm very interested in fiber. Which definitely, I kind of spark the.
Yeah, so we have a pretty robust communication system that will start going out. Um, the way we kind of break this up is, is we take a systematic approach, is we take the entire Glendale Heights area, and we break it up into polygons, what we refer to as, like, fiber neighborhoods. And so, once a permit is approved for an area, we sound out a thirty-day communication. Um, it basically says, "Hey, we're Lumos, we're gonna be constructing, offering new fiber services in there." It also has, like, a phone number, email address, QR code, so if you have questions, wanna get information about what services will be available, um, that will be there. And then, once we actually start painting kind of white lines, which will be our running line where the fiber will be, we'll put yard darts, um, then we'll also start placing door hangers, um, in all, in a, in a way to be able to communicate, "Hey, we're Lumos, any questions, concerns, please give us a call, um, we're here to help."
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, do you have phone number, you know?
Yes.
You can provide to these people.
Yes, there'll be a one-eight-hundred number on there, um, so if there are any questions or concerns, you'll be able to talk with the live representative, if there are any, like, um, escalations or issues, we'll have somebody get back to you within twenty-four hours.
Okay, and next is, when you are going to start, you know?
Hopefully, as soon as possible.
That's very generic.
Yes, yeah. We're hoping to start, uh, getting permits here in, in mid-May, um, so once we get those permits filed, we'll be able to start putting shovels in the ground.
What will be cost, you know, to those people, eh, and is there any discount for senior citizen or for lower to modern income, you know?
Yeah, definitely, great question, so are, we offer services from five hundred mags all the way up to eight gigs. So, to give you an example of what that five hundred mags is, it's fifty dollars a month, um, and that's all in, that's in taxes, fees, equipment. Um, and one thing great that a lot of customers appreciate is it's not a twelve-month, twenty-four-month price commitment, that's just the price it is.
So, do you have any cap on the data?
No cap.
No cap?
No cap.
Oh, great.
Anybody else, any comments, uh, question, yes, Wuher?
Is this a private company, or is that a domestic?
We are a private company, um, I'm not sure if you did Google the name, we did just complete a merger with T-Mobile. So, um, you'll actually see, we'll kind of be the construction arm of T-Mobile. So, one thing great for the community is you'll be able to go to your local T-Mobile store, leverage those existing retail shops, local customer service, uh, to be able to get customer service or order those. And hopefully, we'll be able to bundle those, uh, too as well.
Any, yes.
Fiber lines, when they're in, are they gonna be where other companies could buy into those lines, so we can have multiple carriers to choose from, or is it just gonna be you guys?
Potentially, um, the reason why I say that is, uh, T-Mobile will have exclusive access to our lines, or certain.
You can speak in the mic, you know?
Yeah, sorry about that.
Sorry.
So, T-Mobile will have access to our lines privately for a certain number of years, after that, there's a potential that it could go into what they call, like, a open access model that allow other providers to leave space on that. Yeah.
Anyone else, no questions? Okay, a role call vote, please. Uh, no more question, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Absolutely.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
A motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash nineteen is approved. So, I need. Don't have that.
You don't have it? Uh, we have a motion to authorize the finance director to process accounts, you got it?
Yeah, I got it. Okay, number six, a motion to authorize the finance director to process accounts payable and pay requests for April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, including concert, pay request, uh, concert, contracts, pay request will be ratified on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. If there is a motion to authorize the finance director to process accounts payable and pay requests for April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, including contracts, contract pay requests to be ratified on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Trustee Light?
So moved.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Discussion. None, role call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The motion to authorize the finance director to process accounts payable and pay requests for April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, including contract pay requests to be ratified on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, is approved. Next is a public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on agenda item only? Anyone from public? None, exact of session, there is none. Adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Uh, Siddiqui?
Second.
Second is a Mary, Trustee Mary Schroder. Uh, role call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Uh, Trustee Light, you have the committee of the whole.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting for April seventeenth to order. Uh, Ms. Clark, would you please note who's present?
Noted.
All right, do we have any additions or deletions? All right, being none, we'll make this easy. All right, we'll go on to committee reports. Uh, let's start out with the Glendale Lakes Golf Club Committee.
No report.
No report. Uh, Historical Committee, believe it or not, no report. Um, Ordnance Committee?
No report.
No report. Uh, Parks and Recreation Committee?
No report.
No report. Uh, Property Enhancement Committee?
No report.
Wow, you guys are easy. All right, and the Senior Advisory Committee?
I, I just wanna make note that the seniors went through the police department the other day, and they were very, very pleased to see everything that's been done, and they were very thrilled that you invited them to come. So, thank you so much.
We enjoyed them, yeah.
Is that it? Is that it, Mayor?
Oh, that's it, I'm sorry.
That's it?
Yes.
All right, perfect, I, being we have no discussion regarding other. Um, I have one request here submitted to, uh, speak public comment, Margaret Langgraf.
Hello, everyone, um, I'm Margaret, um, I live on president. Um, I ran for District Two trustee the last election, and I wanted to thank everyone who voted for me. Um, I was honored to receive so many votes. Um, congratulations, Trustee Siddiqui.
Thank you.
You, you ran an honest campaign, and I, I really appreciated that. Um, so, Saturday, I ta- I attended the turf field opening ceremony, and it was wonderful. I wanna thank everyone for organizing that, and, um, I wanna tell the residents, if you haven't seen that field, you have to go see it. Um, it's, it's really impressive, and it's something that we should all be proud of. Um, I was very impressed, I don't, I don't think any other community nearby us has something like that. Um, it, it was really nice. Um, I, I just wanna mention that I did have the pleasure of speaking with Mohammed on Saturday, and, um, I regret not having a chance to speak with him sooner. Um, he's not the person I believed him to be. Um, thank you for engaging with me.
Not from.
Okay, um, and please don't hesitate to reach out to me if I can help you in any way.
Sure.
I, I was very passionate about trying to help the village move forward. Um, I asked Mohammed if he would please make it a priority to fix the permit process um, in the village, um, because that was what drove me to run for office. Um, as a village, we wanna, people to improve their property, um, we don't wanna hinder their progress, and I feel like a lot could be improved to encourage people to fix their property instead of scare them out of doing it. Um, politics have been brutal this season, for me, anyway. Um, I tried to get the truth about a lot of rumors and also substantiated claims that I heard about other candidates. And I hope that the defeated candidates will continue to contribute to the success of our village. Um, I feel like the ones that I met all had good intentions, and I would like to publicly say that Cheryl has a good heart, and Jim, he really cares about the village. Um, I heard a lot of slanderous things about them that, after having spent time with them, I don't believe them to be true. Um, ten days before the election, Trustee Light was publicly accused of racism at the village board meeting. I tried to gather facts to substantiate that claim. I still have not received facts from the accusers to support this. Um, I called people who work closely with Mike Light to see if there was any truth in this, I found nothing. Um, disagreement is healthy, spreading unfounded claims about people is wrong. Um, after the accusations were made, there was no platform available to defend Mike. It wa- it was not fair, especially ten days before the election. Um, I hope now that it's over, we can unite and move forward respectfully. Um, Glendale Heights has a couple of Facebook groups that censor activity for their unique individual reasons. Many of my posts were deleted in the final week before the election. I see a strong need for a new group that engages everyone to rive at the truth.
Margaret, we're just about out of time, sorry.
Okay.
You can give her permission to keep talking if you want. For, okay, 'cause I know we were. Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I, I would like, I would like to, a Snopes-like group, a group that proves allegation, allegations true or false, and validates or negates hearsay through a public debate. An example of this, just village-wise, is the statement, "I'm never going to be able to move from my home because I can't afford the move-out permit inspection cost." A lot of people say that. It would be great if we had a platform where we could provide information to dispel these myths, or tell people what they knew, need to do to prepare to move, so they don't deal with that consequence. Or have a platform where people can say, "When I moved, it wasn't that bad," or, you know, just to talk about it. Um. Um, anyway, um, um, if the, if the concerns of the residents are true on this site, um, they could open discussion at the board meetings to try to improve the image. Um, some of the other issues are, how does the village determine what streets to fix first? When I was outdoor knocking, a lot of people were asking me that. Why does the street get done twice and mine never gets done? Um, it would be great to eliminate any hint of favoritism, so that the residents feel that everything's fair and equitable. Another was, why was my neighbor able to widen his driveway and I cannot? Um, the list goes on and on, but things like that, we need a place where they can post that, and then we can say, "This is the procedure, this is why you couldn't do it," or just to put it out there publicly, so that you won't get hit with the same question over and over again. Um, but anyway, I, I'm hoping to start a Facebook group similar to that, um, and especially posting about the cricket ties. I've heard allegations about, um, bias between different board members, and that's what caused all the issues in the last four years, and it would be great to have a place where the truth can come out. Um, is there a conflict in interest, is there a quid pro quo? Um, just 'cause you're friends with the cricket league director doesn't mean that you're showing favoritism. But there's a lot of division in the village because of that, and it would be great just to clear that up somewhere. Um, also, this, this group would call it disbehave, uh, like, improper behavior or disrespect at the meetings. If someone speaks out of turn, we could publicly post that was, like, unacceptable, and people would think before they acted in a way to say something that wasn't true or that they didn't have facts to support it. Um, um, another idea I had was, um, to create a resident concern committee um, that would hold, like, a public meeting to discuss concerns and ask ques- answer questions, um, so that we don't come to the board meetings with this. It could be just more of an open forum, and involve more board members than coffee with the mayor currently does. Um, also, to have the committee to do the research and communicate back, um, to the community in some way. Um, I'm hoping that the continuing board members and the new two board members and Rebecca, our new mayor, will support this as well, thank you.
Rebecca, thank, oh, Rebecca, I'm sorry, Margaret, thank you. All right, is there anyone else in the public that would like to address this board?
Ed Pope, we're in heaven, sorry, Mikey.
Thanks, Ed.
Uh, I got two, uh, actually, three, I'll make them quick. Uh, George, I got a Facebook thing today, you know, where they send you a request to join a group, and instead it was from the Glendale Heights Police Department. I clicked on it, and, I didn't join, but I clicked on it, and the, there was a post, but it was from twenty-ten. Um, is, is that, eh, you think it's some kind of scam?
There's probably a dead Facebook or a Neighborhood Watch program that's old, but there is the only Facebook post that we have, Dave Genti runs, and it is the Glendale Heights Police one, so. If there's nothing on that page, then it's the one that was probably initiated a long time ago, and there is no, nothing on that one.
Okay, I just, I thought, you know, click on these things, and they turn out to be scams and stuff. Um, Keith, I owe Keith an apology, so I have to do it publicly. I called him out on the tennis court for pickleball two weeks ago, and it turns out, it was there, it just wasn't adjusted. He had his guys adjusted, and you can now play pickleball on the one court at Nausers, which is awesome, 'cause I'm telling you, half my neighborhood's playing it, I hope we can expand it eventually. And then, Keith, I gotta call you one more thing, sorry, but, uh, I'm not, I'm never gonna give this up, so. What's going on with, uh, my request for the Gina Thorson room? It's been a year.
So, the plan is to put it on the agenda of the Senior Advisory Committee coming up here, I don't know if it'll be the next meeting or the meeting after that, but that's where it's gonna start.
Okay. So, what do we have to do? If you're gonna put it in front of them, or you're gonna put it out so that we can go talk to them about it, and make them understand why this is so important?
It'll start with whether we want, there's policy stuff that we need to do in a bigger way on any naming of the rooms and stuff, I think it's a bigger conversation, that's why we're gonna start there and determine how we wanna proceed from there. So, to rename that room, hopefully, we can create some sort of process to do so, because.
I don't believe the room has a name. I don't believe the room has a name.
You're talking about the, no, no, I'm saying for any room to happen. Because I don't wanna go down the path and suddenly I've got thirty-two different naming rights for a room or whatever.
We need to come up with a policy and a way to do it.
And I know we've had, I've been squawking about this for a year now and, uh, I really feel it's super important and it was supposed to be something we were gonna do after the construction was done, construction is done and I'm just trying to kick this up the hill here.
Okay, we'll look into it.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Is there anyone else from the public?
Mike.
Okay.
I would like to say something.
Well, yeah, more public first, thank you.
No, all good, all good, Tony Matresko. I did wanna say about the park, it, it's amazing, that soccer field. And when I saw Park and Recs and there was no update, oh gosh, that's a huge thing. You guys did an amazing job, those kids all love it. I do wanna tell you that I was at dinner yesterday and I met a little girl who actually played on that field. She was so excited, her eyes lit up, she's giving me her schedule so I can go watch her play. These kids love this field, so thank you, you, this is a huge thing for us. So I wanna make sure everyone gets credit for that because that was a great time. Also, breakfast with the bunny, oh my god, or, I think that's what we called it, I apologize, but that was a great time and the police officers did an amazing job with the eggs. My grandkids loved every minute of it. And I saw those kids, they were all happy. So I wanna give kudos to all of you, that was wonderful, we gotta keep doing those things, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to address this board? All right, being none, then we call for adjournment. Uh, trustee Schmidt?
Motion to adjourn.
I said I wanted to say.
Oh, I'm sorry, my bad.
I, I just wanted to thank our newly elected mayor for taking the time to come. I hope you enjoyed our meeting 'cause you're gonna be having quite a few of them yourselves, but you're welcome, Stight, and we appreciate you coming, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you, all right, we have a motion, we have a second. We have a second, uh, Mayor Coker, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, meeting is adjourned.